Andy was directed to serve this warrant by posting up protested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Here I'll fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as foresaid. Given under our hands this 27th day of April in the year of our Lord 2020. Berlin Board of Select men Christine Keith Chair, Lisa Wysocki Vice Chair, Margaret Stone Clerk, a true copy attests Kevin Palm Constable. Wister SS. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up protested copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office, at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting as directed within. Kevin Palm, dated May 1, 2020. The sun is gone, and while I'm at the microphone, I'm going to drop my mask so that I'll be more easily understood. If you catch me away from the microphone without it, get after me. You have a voter card in your packet. The voters received a yellow voter card, and that voter card needs to be signed. If you have not yet signed it, please take and sign it now. You even have a pen in your package to sign it with. And that means it's identified as yours and only yours, and don't lose it because you don't get a second one. In the course of the meeting, if we vote by hand vote, I'll be asking you to raise those so we can see all the hands, and otherwise than that, just keep it on your person so that you always know where it is. At this point, I'm going to, we have the Select Board on your right, the three members of the Select Board, Chris Keith, Peggy Stone, and Lisa Wysocki, and our new town administrator this year, Margaret Madewitt. Welcome, Margaret. And on this side, we have the members of the Finance Committee, all five of them together for the first time in quite a while, due to some health issues. So we have Stan Rogulinski, and Mike Ginsberg, and Mary Porter, and Janet Leavy, and way over there, Barzares. We're even socially distanced up here, and we'll see how all of this goes, but with a small number present, I think it should zip right along quite nicely. You have a motion sheet in your packet, and we will be referring both to the motion sheet and to the warrant for the annual town meeting that's in the back of your Town Report booklet, which starts on page 97. And those are both documents you may find useful in the course of the meeting to understand each article and each section as it comes up. The first section of the warrant has four articles which deal with bylaws which were passed at our town meeting last year, but due to some various questions involved, the Attorney General has not seen fit to approve, even though we'll, and we'll have to wait and see what will happen after we deal with them now. If we pass them again now, we can do a fresh mailing to the Attorney General and hopefully have an answer back in 60 or 90 days from now and have it over with. At this time, is there a motion in regard to those four articles? Lisa.
I move to approve the motions under Articles 1 through 4 as shown on the motion sheet for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt the four motions that are on the motion sheet itself that refer to the four articles and deal with the questions that need to be dealt with on them. The only changes from last year are a minor thing because we had a mistake when we were doing the warrant in the numbering of some paragraphs under Article 3, and in Article 4, excuse me, in Article 3 also, we have the effective date for the bylaw because last year it was going to be effective at a time that is now passed. Are there any questions about any of these four articles or any comments in regard to a vote on them? Seeing no hands and hearing no noise, I will ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you. Next, Article 5, payment of snow and ice deficit spending. Peggy Stone. Oh, I'm sorry. Chris.
I move to pass over Article 5.
Motion to pass over Article 5. We didn't have as much snow and ice as we thought we might. Anything to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 6, fire EMS pump-a-tank-a-sunset class extension. Is there a motion under Article 6? Christine.
I move to amend the vote taken under Article 20 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting by extending to June 30, 2021, the date by which money must be extended for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new fire EMS department pump-a-tanker truck.
Motion made and seconded. The motion has printed on your sheet. Is there anyone to speak on this motion? There is a summary in, under Article 6 in your Town Report that will explain why this is being done, and I hope you've had a chance to read it already. Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous vote. Article 7, Economic Development Committee Appointment and Composition. Motion under Article 7.
Seven is the planning board. Seven is planning board. I can do it. I move to amend the vote taken under Article 37 of the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting to create the Economic Development Committee by changing the appointing authority to be exclusively the planning board and allowing the number of committee members to be set by the planning board.
Is there anything to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Articles 8 through 13. These are all items that come up in each year's town meeting. They're usually passed by large majorities, and to save time, we try to take them up together. A motion under Articles 8 through 13. Hey.
I move to approve the motions as printed under Articles 8 through 13 of the warrant for this meeting.
You will note that in the, in your Town Report, the motions are printed under the Articles. We did not repeat all those motions since they're such common things that we always do. If you want to see the motions, they are under Articles 8 through 13 in the book. Anything to be said on this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article 14.
I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 12b, to solicit and award contracts for terms exceeding three years, including any renewal, extension, or option, provided in each instance the longer term is determined to be in the best interest of the town by a vote of the Board of Selectmen as appropriate.
Motion is made and seconded. It is as printed in your motion sheet. Is there anything to be said on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. Article 15, Outstanding Town Reports. The first outstanding town report, and it is an outstanding town report, is the one of the town administrator, which is found in your packet. The copy of it is in your packet. And it is not outstanding in terms of not having been printed due to any fault of the town administrator, but rather the Town Report Committee, and somehow between the members of the Town Report Committee, we managed to leave it out. It is, of course, the first year that we've had a town administrator's report, and it was submitted timely. We just kind of mucked getting it in the book. So here it is, and the Town Report Committee apologizes to Margaret, and we hope that you will read it as you have your chance, and it will be posted along with other, all of the town reports. It is already up on the internet in the full copy of the Town Report that's up online now. We added it to that file. Are there any other committees or individual offices that did not submit a report that would like to do so orally at this time? Well, if you're a committee that's not a regular constitutional committee in some way, you don't report it at least once a year, your committee no longer exists under the town bylaws. So we may or may not have lost a committee or two as a result here. Is there a motion to accept the town administrator's report? Motion made and seconded to accept the administrator's town report. The first one of these that we've had, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much. Unanimous vote. Article 16, Cable Access Committee, PEG Funding. Peggy.
I move to appropriate.
We've got a table advisory member to present this.
No, no, you stood up. I'm good. Here. Let me just.
I'm right up for you.
Go ahead.
I'm right up for you.
Don't worry, it's good.
Sure. Right there.
I.
See if it's turned on.
You've got it turning on.
It's this on?
Yep.
I move to appropriate from the Public Education and Government Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $59,520 as a grant to be used for the fiscal year 2021 operating purpose, and an additional $40,000 to fund the purchase and installation of audio and video equipment, and any cost related or incidental thereto in meeting rooms located at the town offices of 23 Rimbin Street in accordance with the PEG Access Grant and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F, then three quarters, said some to be expended by the Cable Access Committee.
May I have the paper, please? Motion is made and seconded for this appropriation, $59,520 to be used as a grant for operating purposes, and an additional $40,000 to fund the purchase and installation of audio and video equipment at the Town Office Building. These funds are, these are funds which we receive from our cable company that serves the town, so they're not out of anybody's pocket except if they pay their cable bill, and they are then available for the town's appropriation for these various uses. Is there anyone that wants to, do you want to speak further to it? Yeah. Does anyone else want to speak to the mic? No. Okay, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 17. Is the budget for the coming fiscal year, and for this, we'll call on the Finance Committee. Stan Rogulinski has been co-chair for this summer this year, and will be speaking on in regard to this and presenting our motion.
Thank you, Barry. I'll just slow down this runaway freight train of a town meeting. It can now come to the budget. I would just like to say that I am speaking because Buzz did experience some health challenges this year, and so we did not have him on our committee after December. So he felt, given that he had not been able to participate in the whole process, that he would be up here with us, but was not going to speak as chair. So I was reluctantly somewhat elected as vice chair, and also will do all of the speaking so that we only have the one microphone and don't have to clean it. So I'd also like to start out by thanking June and Margaret. They've been just a tremendous help throughout this whole very onerous budget process this year. This was, this was a doozy. We had the budget basically done February, March, and I think we all know what happened. Townwide, we instituted, they instituted a spending freeze. Non-essential spending was capped. Only salaries and essential spending was authorized, and in keeping with that, the 2021 budget has also been held to essential spending. We did our very best to minimize the impact on people's tax bills. We understand clearly the impact of COVID in the environment, in our community, and know that an increased tax bill is the last thing that folks want. Having said that, clearly costs do go up. There are some minor salary increases. We have tended to, throughout the budget, keep all of them zero level base, zero increase double funded from last year, with a few exceptions with a couple of folks that were kind of out of whack with the market, and so trying to get those positions more in line with market rates. And then clearly, we have other large expenditures that we don't have a lot of control over, but we did our very best to keep the budget to a minimum, and also understanding and realizing that next year's financial revenues will be severely impacted due to first quarter of 2021, meals tax reductions, hotel tax reductions, and state aid reductions, and right across the board. We absolutely expect to see a very serious reduction in revenues for the town for 2021. Having said that, we're actually in a pretty good financial position. We have a very strong stabilization fund. We did not tap into that, and I think without further ado, I will get into the specific articles or the line items in the budget. So, first motion is I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,314,242 to fund Items 1 through 49, this is general government, to transfer from assessors' overlay surplus to sum of $9,000 to Item 22, and to transfer from free cash to sum of $140,000 to Item 12, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY21.
Motion is made and seconded. It is in the same form as you have it on your motion sheet. Dan, you want to hand me that covered sheet?
If I don't lose the rest of mine, sure.
Do you want to say a few words about the $140,000 item?
Sure. That is actually a new item for the budget, a new line item for the budget this year, recommended by Margaret and June, thoughtfully considered by the Finance Committee, with the expectation that there will be some unforeseen costs this year due to COVID-related expenses. There will also potentially be the ability to increase, I think it was increase some salaries, I believe, if the money was available. This line item can only be spent by a vote of both the Select Board and by Finance Committee. It comes from free cash. It's not raising appropriate, it's not raising folks taxes, but it does come from free cash, which if we spend down all our free cash, then we do have to raise and appropriate things. But this leaves our free cash in still a very healthy position. June could speak a little more to that, but we do have a very healthy free cash position, and this money will only be spent if needed. If it is not needed, it goes right back into free cash.
Are there any other comments anyone wishes to make in regard to this motion? I would direct you to page 91 in your Town Report, page 91, which is the beginning of the budget section, excuse me, page 90, page 90, and that is Page Items 1 through 49. Those of you that are covered by this motion, all of those items are, would be funded if you vote this motion through. If I hear no comment, I'm going to ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I call a unanimous vote.
Continuing on, Public Safety. Motion. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,163,848 to fund Items 50 through 71. Appropriate from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Account to sum of $204,152 to Item 51, Police Wages Full Time, $146,628, and Item 55, Fire and EMS Wages Full Time, $57,524. To appropriate from Rescue Squad Receipts, appropriate, reserve for appropriation the sum of $100,000 to Item 55, Fire and EMS Wages Full Time, and to appropriate from the Inspector's gas, or Inspector's Offset Receipts, the amount of sum of $200,000 to Item 62, Plumbing and Gas Inspector Wages Part Time, $100,000, and Item 64, Electrical Inspector Wages Part Time, $100,000, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on any one in regard to this motion? This funds our public safety accounts, and that's on page 91.
And all those other items coming from various accounts are basically the revenues received by inspectors that offset the costs of said inspectors.
Seeing nobody running for the cone, and no hands waving around, I'm going to assume that we're ready to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Continuing on to Public Works. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $714,675 to fund Items 72 through 83. To appropriate from the Transfer Station Sticker and Recycling Offset Receipts Account to sum of $110,000 to Item 81, Transfer Station Expenses, and to appropriate from General Cemetery Receipts the sum of $8,950 to Item 83, Cemetery Expenses, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there anything to be said on this motion?
The only thing Finance would say on this is that the Florida health expenses, or the transfer station expenses, are going up as folks probably understand in light of the world situation of trash removal and recycling, we are experiencing tremendous increases in this portion of our budget. We've done the best to limit increasing sticker prices and impact the town budget, but you will see a significant increase in sticker prices. But I will also mention that we also did do a serious look at what it costs folks to have trash picked up for themselves, and this is still a pretty good value of buying stickers and bringing your, bringing your stuff to the transfer station. So it's a big jump, but it's also still a very, still a very good value when you're paying for trash service.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Continuing on, Human Services. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,720 to fund Items 84 through 95 in the Finance Committee's recommended FY21 budget.
Motion is made and seconded. These items can be found at the top of 94 in your Town Report. We're voting to fund all of those from 84 through 95 under this motion. Anyone else want to speak on it? Hearing no, and I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Culture and Recreation. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $171,928 to fund Items 96 through 102 in the Finance Committee's recommended FY21 budget.
Motion is made and seconded on the Culture and Recreation. Anything to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Debt and Interest. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $315,530 to fund Items 103 and 104. To appropriate from septic loan receipts available for appropriation, the sum of $4,350 to Item 104, principal, and to appropriate from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Receipts preserved for appropriation account, the sum of $235,601 to Item 103, interest, $4,223, and Item 104, principal, $231,378, for the payoff of the Fire Department Ladder Truck debt service, as recommended by the Finance Committee FY21.
Motion is made and seconded. Do you want to speak to that further, Stan?
So what I would say to this is that we did, as a committee, actively discuss this. This was, this was definitely a kind of a key point for us this year. We had a choice of either paying it off this year or splitting the payments over two years and paying the rest of it off next year. We just strongly felt that, given the financial climate of potential, and I'm sure soon to be realized, reductions in revenues for next year, that it made sense to pay it off for this year. And that's why we chose to do it that way. The savings wasn't huge. As you see, the interest was 4,000 something, but really, to help us for next year, we thought we should, we should get this all paid off this year.
Is there anyone question or comment in regard to this motion?
And also to note, sorry, and also to note that this did come from mitigation funds. This is not, this is not through increased taxes to pay it off really, or pay it off. And that's another good point, is that there is a chance that we may not even get mitigation funds next year. But as you know, malls that have been closed and the stores are, everybody's certain, and there could very well be a request for a, for and there could very well be a request for a forbearance, or however we want to put that, of reduction and forgiveness of those mitigation funds for next year. So we will seriously have to look at that as a town.
Anything further to be said here? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is as the motion under Article 17 in your motion sheet. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries in affirmative.
All right, Intergovernmental Expenditures. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $842 to fund item 105 in the Finance Committee's FY21 budget.
Motion is made and seconded for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission payment. If you're wondering why we're having a single vote on $842, the answer is look at the next ones that come below it, and you'll see why we don't want to take them up as a group. Anything to be said on the $842? Now I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Intergovernmental expenditures. Assabet. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $538,085 to fund items 106 and 107 in the Finance Committee's FY21 budget.
for all the costs at Assabet Valley School that are required from the town, assessed from the town. Anything to be said on this motion?
What I'd say on this one is this is a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing that more of our students are taking advantage of Assabet as a school, and it's a curse that we then have to pay for it. But they are, we thoroughly enjoy working with Assabet, and they're a great group. And it's a big jump from last year, but that's strictly, it's almost entirely just due to additional pupils attending Assabet. It's not, it's not a, a big increase in their budget.
Anyone else wish to speak on it? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote.
More Intergovernmental Expenditures, Berlin Memorial School. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,305,741 to fund items 108 and 109. And to transfer from the following prior special article appropriations, the sum of $94,000 to item 109, Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY21. And, sorry, I was just going to say, so those are broken out in Article 14, adding $51,000 for building modifications. Article 26, from 2019, of $35,500 for permanent inspection software. And Article, and from 2011, curbing and sidewalks of $7,500.
All right, in the process of this motion, we are both funding Berlin Memorial School, all costs for this year, this coming year. But we are also closing out three previous articles from previous years of unspent funds. So we're accomplishing two, two things at once here. And those, that money is being used toward the Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment, which has impaired this building and so on behind us. Stan, do you want to comment on the numbers here as opposed to the numbers that were in the book?
Yeah, so what I would, what I would say about this is that the schools and the school committee have also been great to work with. They've really taken to heart this whole notion of difficulty with next year's budget. They've really scrubbed their numbers, and they came back to us after we had approved their, and after their dollar amount had been approved for the year, and they had made further cuts. So that is why your numbers are amended from the book. They're lower. And, and the reason that they're lower is because they did go back and take a look at it. And they, they are going to be faced with the same challenges we are as a town. They're going to be faced with, with a very difficult situation next year of trying to budget, and trying to figure out how they're going to pay for their schools, as is Assabet clearly. And, but we heartily, heartily endorse having worked with them, and they really, and they're a great partner for us, with us too. And they, and they went back and really looked at things, and we thank them for that. Yeah, so that's both for the operating budget and for their capital budget as well.
Does anyone else want to speak on this appropriation for the Berlin Memorial School? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
And to close out, Intergovernmental Expenditures. Tohonto, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,199,955 to fund items 110 and 111, as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY21. The Tohonto Assessment was $2,623,776, and the capital assessment was $576,179.
Motion is made and seconded for $3,199,955 to fund the Tohonto Assessments for the new fiscal year.
Data everything I said for Berlin Memorial.
Again, we had a slight drop in the Tohonto Assessment as well. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Unanimous vote.
Miscellaneous Benefits Insurance, a portion of the budget that we dread, because there's not a whole lot we can do about it, and it just keeps going up. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,510,010 to fund items 112 through 119 in the Finance Committee's recommended FY21 budget.
Motion is made and seconded. Again, these are the items in Miscellaneous Benefits and Insurance on the bottom of page 92 in your town report. A million and a half dollars. Anyone want to speak on these? Seeing no one over here at the cone, I will say, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. And thank you to the Finance Committee. This was, as Stan said, they had the thing just about, had it really done. And up came COVID-19, and the potential for great losses of, of revenue, and oh my. So it was a, it was a tough time for a few weeks there. Fiscal, Article 18. Yep, Anna Crane?
Anna Crane, Chair of-
You can go speak directly into the mic.
Okay. So Article 18, Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Budget. I move to appropriate from the Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Account, the sum of $171,200 to fund items 1 through 4, and to transfer from free cash, the sum of $205,000 to fund item 5. For the sum total of $376,200 to fund items 1 through 5 in the fiscal year 2021 capital budget, as shown in Article 18 of the warrant for this meeting, including acquisition, installation, equipping, and other expenses incidental or related thereto with all unexpended or unencumbered funds to return to their original funding sources effective June 30, 2021.
I would direct your attention to page 103 in your town report, which has the table which lists out the five, the five items that are included in this motion. And also includes notes that relate to what they are all about and so on. Anna, do you want to speak to it further?
Sure. Capital planning, like FinCom, had a much larger plan for our budget this year, but then things were restricted due to COVID. So we reduced it to what we thought were essential items for this year. The continuation of the firemen, as well as EMS PPE requirements. We funded half of that last year. This year is the second half of getting that equipment replaced. And then the police vehicle, we replace a police vehicle every year, so continuing with that program. Finally, the other, last two are video and security upgrades for our public safety building. It does turn out that some of our video equipment is not quite up to date, and doesn't quite cover all the areas in the public safety building. So we thought that that was very important to repair as soon as possible. And then finally, the parking lot repair over at the public safety building. The parking lot does need repair, and if we repair it this year, we will receive a grant for half the cost. So if you look on item number five, it has a total due of $205,000. But we will receive a grant from the state for $100,000, bringing that total down to only $105,000 that the town has to put out. That only occurs if we do that in fiscal year 2021. So those are the five items that we thought we'd continue for this budget.
Anything to be said on any of these items?
The Finance voted for, for nothing to approve this as well.
Finance Committee recommends this motion. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 19, Establishment of the Capital Stabilization Fund. Anna?
I move to establish a special purpose capitalization stabilization fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to be known as the Capital Stabilization Fund, to be used for capital expenditures otherwise eligible, to be funded by borrowing in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, and to transfer from free cash, the sum of $100, and to transfer from the Highland Commons Capital Contribution Account, the sum of $4,341.16 for a sum total of $4,441.16 to establish initial funding in the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Motion is made and seconded to establish a capitalization, a capital stabilization fund, with $100 from free cash, and $4,341.16 from the Highland Commons Capital Contribution Account. We had, Finance Committee's recommendation is favorable.
In the affirmative, in the affirmative, yes.
Yes. Do you want to say more about it?
Sure. So we did so well with our budgeting and planning this year, pre-COVID, that we had some money left over that we thought would be best to save for next year or any future years in which we had a need for such a surplus. And this stabilization fund would allow us to have those funds available, should we need them in the future. Unfortunately, due to COVID, our goals for our stabilization fund were greatly reduced. But we would still like to establish it while we have some of the fundage available.
And this, this, this motion requires a two-thirds vote, because it's putting money into stabilization. But keep in mind, you will also require a two-thirds vote to take it out someday to spend it. Does anyone else want to comment? Buzz? This is where we need to wipe. This is where we need to wipe.
Turn it off before you wipe it, though.
There you go. You got to turn it on again.
Hello? Can you hear me? Good, okay.
I'm sorry, from the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Is it individual or for the committee?
This is, this is me speaking for myself. I think that happens every year. Yeah, I just wanted to say, now, I should say in advance, because I was in the hospital earlier this year, and then instructed by my doctor to avoid stress, which seemed to preclude being involved in this year's budget process, unfortunately. I was not present for the discussions about this proposed stabilization fund, specifically for capital expenses. But I'm always, just speaking for myself, the town has a stabilization fund. We have a bit more, if memory serves, more than a million dollars in it. And state law allows us to create additional stabilization funds for specific purposes. And you can be sure that all God's children would like to have their own individual stabilization fund, because that means money put into it is restricted for use to that purpose in the future, and not available for the general town budget. So I apologize, I wasn't present to hear the arguments that were made in favor of this. But I would appreciate it if the Capital Planning Committee could explain why it makes more sense to put this money into a special account for your expenses, and not simply into town stabilization. Thank you.
Capital, Capital Planning has a response in that regard?
Sure, that's my mic. Once it's treated. I cook, I have-
No, you got to get off of your microphone.
I actually want to thank-
You don't have to turn it on, I think.
Oh. Hello? So I would like to thank Buzz for that question, because I, I actually think it's a really good one, that nobody asked us before. So I am going to totally make this up on the fly. As far as funds being specific for capital planning, one of the budgets that is often in debate when the budgetary system comes, or the budget planning for next year starts coming about, is the capital request and the capital plan. And as capital planning, we don't actually approve any spending. We just make recommendations to the Select Board and to FinCom for what we recommend as capital spending. So it would be, the spending of these funds would be based merely on our recommendations, but the decision would be made not only by the Board of Selectmen, but also by FinCom, that it would be appropriate at that point in time to use those funds for specific capital issues. As well as, as the moderator pointed out, it would then require a two-thirds vote from the town itself to use that funds for capital items. from the town itself to use that funds for capital items. It's also a very small amount. We are talking just a hundred dollars from free cash. The other funds, the four thousand dollars, if I'm aware correctly, is already earmarked for capital projects, because it is coming from Highland Commons funds that have been earmarked for capital projects within the public safety domain. That might be something Margaret could, she's nodding, so I must be right. So those funds are, the majority of the funds we're asking for are currently already earmarked for capital issues.
Other further comments on this question?
Would you like Margaret to call up, Anna?
Yes.
That would be lovely. I will wait. I will turn off first.
Margaret Natter, what's the town address of?
I would ask people also to look at the summary in, under that warrant article in the annual town meeting warrant, which actually describes the best practices associated with establishing such a special stabilization fund. This does provide for long-term planning for capital needs. Now this year, the town is paying off ladder truck debt service. That debt service was put on the tax levy by establishing a capital stabilization fund and then programmatically funding it. We could use this in future years to reduce the amount of debt service for large capital equipment like that. Additionally, to address the issue of the stabilization, the general stabilization fund, we may not have thought about this much prior to COVID-19, but Barry has mentioned, the moderator has mentioned a few times, and others have mentioned, that we are anticipating decreased revenues, and we actually are expecting, as economists are saying, we need to be expecting the economy to decline or be in decline for the next few years. We do not know if we're going to need to look at the stabilization fund to actually stabilize the town's finances, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Other others that wish to speak? If not, we'll move on to a vote. This is the Establishment of the Capital Stabilization Fund, as seen in the motion sheet under Article nineteen. I'll ask you to vote now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All right, the ayes have it. I got to stop and do this right. I'll ask the noes to please raise your voter cards. Ask the noes to raise your voter cards. I'm seeing about eight. Those in favor, please? I would say we have about five times as many yeses. The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Special article closeout, Article twenty.
I have it, Chris, or do you want to do it? Do you have it as well as the verdict?
Chris has it.
Have at it.
I move to close out the remaining balances totaling five thousand and five, five thousand and five dollars and forty-two cents in the special article accounts identified in the table under Article twenty of the warrant for this meeting.
The motion's for five thousand and five dollars and forty-two in special articles. If you look at page one oh four in your town report, on the top of the right-hand column, you see a list of the four articles that are covered by this, and the amounts that are left in those balances, and they're closing out these accounts so that that money can go back to the general fund. Anything to be said on this motion? Finance Committee recommends?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Finance Committee recommends. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And before I take the next motion, I want to announce the end of the meeting. We're going to dismiss, we're going to ask you not to just everybody go at once, but rather to, we'll dismiss you kind of by rows a bit, so that we don't get too many clapping together as we go out. I don't think it'd take us long to do it, but it's just so we can keep our social distance when the meeting is completed. The next motion is a motion to adjourn, and therefore, we can't debate it, and once we've voted it, the meeting is done for this evening. So I wanted to get that announcement in first. Motion, Article twenty-one. Lisa?
Before I make the final motion, I just want to say a huge thank you to everybody who set up the chairs and made this happen outside, because it was an enormous undertaking. So thank you very much to everybody who took part in it. And then I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, at twelve noon at the Berlin Town Offices, twenty-three Linden Street, Lower Level, at which time and place, the polls will be open for the election of town officers under Article twenty-one, and that following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting be dissolved.
I'd like the motion, please. Motion is made and seconded. I would also add the thanks to the police department, the fire department, the, especially highway, our cable TV people who gave us our sound system, as well as the television coverage part, and also the school department, because we're, as usual, not only using their space, but their furniture and a few other things, and they helped us get some of the materials out here. It was really, it was really fun, interesting to watch the process, and we, like all the other towns that do open town meetings, have been having interesting experiences for the first time this year, and we're delighted that this one went as quickly and easily as it has. I'll ask you to vote on the final motion, which is to adjourn to next Monday at noon, when we will be open for the election. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.